I'd like to call to order the regular joint meeting of the Minnehaha County and Sioux Falls Planning Commission, and I'm going to begin with a few introductory comments. If you haven't already done so, please silence your cell phones for the meeting for courtesy of all those who are here. The two planning commissions work together on land use and zoning matters within the rural and surrounding area of the city. This area is displayed on the screen soon. It will be. That's not it? There it is. It's in the blue. After information and testimony is presented on the agenda, the item, for the agenda item, the members will discuss the matter, and then each planning commission will vote independently to arrive with a decision. Any final action taken on the conditional use permit will take effect five working days following this meeting unless a written appeal of tonight's decision is filed in the county planning office by Wednesday, December 30, 5:00 p.m. When the joint agenda is complete, the city planning commission will adjourn the meeting and will continue as the county planning commission considers items beyond the joint zoning jurisdiction. I should have started by saying, it is kind of confusing, I think, sitting in the audience. There's two bodies acting here. Jesse chairs for the city, and I chair for the county side. We're going to take separate motions on the same items and take actions on them that way. So, at this time, let's see, we're going to consider the, there are no, consent agenda item is the approval of the minutes. Any objections to the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, and a second, to approve the consent agenda, which is the minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in the same sign. Motion carries. The regular agenda consists of a conditional use permit for a solar energy conservation farm, and that is approximately one mile west of Sioux Falls on 268th Street, and do we have a motion to approve the regular agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Motion, second, for the regular agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in the same sign. Okay. So, with that, David, are you in the hot seat to come up and explain this item?
Yes. David Heine, planning department. We have conditional use permit 14-44 to allow a solar energy conversion system. As you mentioned, this is one mile west on 268th Street of Sioux Falls. It's roughly halfway between the Country Acres subdivision and Sioux Falls suburban residential, as you can see on the map here. Cherry Creek Solar is a subsidiary of Geronimo Wind Energy LLC. They submitted a conditional use permit application for the Cherry Creek Solar Farm or a commercial solar energy conversion system. The applicant is requesting approval of the conditional use permit from SECs in order to accommodate for the anticipated project timeline, which has been attached for your review in the narrative. Due to the lengthy development process and need to have insurance for permitting for the marketability of the solar site, it's preferable for Cherry Creek to receive a longer timeframe for commencement of the proposed solar energy conversion system. The estimated completion date is scheduled for December 2016, and the applicant has also attached detailed information in the form of a preliminary site plan, which shows the general footprint layout of the project. If we skip forward just ahead here, here's the site plan, which shows the general footprint and layout of the project. As you can see, it would come off 468th would be the rough entrance to where the project would be located, and if I back up to the location map, as you can see here on this inset map right here, they would be interconnecting with the existing utility lines that Excel runs at 41st and Ellis Road, which is about one mile to the east of 468th Avenue, which would be about a half mile to the north of the site, which would be that one. And that would be, mostly consists of underground cabling and wires. The project summary, it covers roughly approximately 99 acres. The entire parcel is 140. The site was selected based on significant landowner interest, interconnection suitability with utility lines, optimal solar resource potential, and minimal environmental impact. The planned output for the project is up to 10 megawatts of solar capacity, which would generate enough energy to power roughly 2,000 homes annually. The solar farm is proposed to utilize typical 300-watt photovoltaic panels, centralized inverters, and a linear axis tracking system, or a fixed tilt racking system for the site. The panels themselves would be approximately four to six and a half feet long by two to three and a half feet wide, one to two inches thick, and to the extent practical, the foundations will likely be a steel-driven pier in the ground. Additional geotechnical soil tests may need to be completed to determine whether concrete foundations will be required for the solar panel arrays. The areas of bare ground at this facility will be revegetated with a low-growing plant-seed mix, i.e. clover, short grasses, or flowers, low-growing forbs, low-growing wetland seed mixes, or some other low-growing perennial cover. Internally, the panels will be connected electrically to meet at a centralized inverter, which will convert the DC power to AC power. An onsite transformer will step up the voltage to meet the interconnection voltage of 34.5 kilovolts. The project, as I mentioned, plans to interconnect with Excel's energy, Excel Energy's existing 34.5-kilovolt distribution system via an approximately one and a half mile 34.5-kilovolt underground collection line. As shown on the map, this line will be buried underground from the project site, continue north along 468th, and then head east on 267th, or otherwise known as an extension of 41st Street, and then to the mile and connect with Ellison 41st Street, where the existing interconnection or the transmission grid is. And just a brief timeline of everything that's happened over the past couple of months. Dan Heine and 30 other members of the public appealed the decision of the Joint Sioux Falls and Minnehaha County Planning Commission on conditional use permit 14-44, as you may recall, to allow a solar energy conversion system, or SECs. Several property owners have submitted letters of concern about the impact the proposed project will have on aesthetics of the landscape, property values, roads, and visual sight. The letters also indicated concerns over whether this is the best use of the land, proximity to residential homes, unsightliness of a six-foot-high chain-link fence around the perimeter, long-term maintenance, and the resale value of their own property. On October 3, 2014, staff discussed with Jordan Burmeister and Nathan Franz of Geronimo Energy of Cherry Creek about an update that they are continuing to meet with landowners to address the concerns that members of the public have about the project. On October 16, staff discussed with Mr. Burmeister about an update that they're working on developing a landscape plan, which they have provided some plan examples from a nearby nursery that's actually just to the southeast of the subject property. The plan would include rows of lilacs, maples, red cedars encompassing approximately 1,282 linear feet on the outside edge of the security fence, as shown in the site plan and the landscape plan, which is included for your review. He added that they are continuing to work with the landowner, or the landowner who is the property owner, or client properties of this subject property for the amount of land to be crop land around the proposed solar site, and the visual buffer of trees on the subject park, so that it would be around the fence. On October 24, Geronimo submitted the landscape plan, which is included in the packet, as well as a decommission plan on how, a preliminary decommission plan on how they plan to remove the solar panels from the site at the end of its lifespan, which would be approximately 25 years. Staff discussed the conditional use permit with Pat Doyle, the Wayne Township Supervisor, which, and mailed notification of this planning commission hearing to him. Mr. Doyle stated concerns over the impact on the tax base, the roads during construction, and the siding of the Dakota Access Pipeline, as you may have heard, from North Dakota to Illinois. On October 24, 2014, staff received the following comment about the impact on the tax base from the Director of Equalization. Since Cherry Creek, Geronimo plans to sell the electricity generated from the solar panels to Excel to distribute locally, then the property would be centrally assessed at a rate yet to be determined. CP 14-44 was heard on October 28, 2014, at the Joint Sioux Falls City Council and Minnehaha County Commission, but remanded back to this body right here, the Joint Planning Commission. Just some of the criteria that we go through in determining the approval of conditional use permits within the zoning ordinance. The impact of the proposed use on adjacent properties shall be a major consideration. The proposed use should not, should be generally compatible with adjacent properties and the other properties in the district. Other than the visual impact of the panels themselves, the proposed solar farm should not have a detrimental effect on adjacent properties. It should be assumed that a majority of the impact will be during setup and the commissioning process itself. However, solar energy conversion systems typically have a much lighter effect on surrounding properties, as well as the land itself than wind energy conversion systems, for example. During operations, few acts or disturbances appear should be expected due to the minimal maintenance required for a solar farm project of this scale. The applicant plans to use panels that are specifically designed to capture the maximum amount of solar energy, therefore, there will be no reflection of any kind on any adjacent properties. On November 4, 2014, staff received a written response from the Director of Equalization regarding the proposed impact of the value increase or decrease of lands if a solar farm is placed nearby. To value properties, you must have sales of equally affected properties, which there are none, since this is a first for the state of South Dakota. This statement would indicate that without more information, the value of these lands cannot be determined. Two, that the measures shall be taken to ensure that the proposed use does not alter the general character of the area or neighborhood. The general character of the area is primarily agricultural, with approximately 10 single-family dwellings and three farmstead sites within a one-mile radius. The project site is located halfway between Sioux Falls Suburban Residential Development and the Country Acres subdivision, which, as you can see, is shown on the map just to the west. The proposed location for this project is on approximately 80 acres of productive agricultural grounds. It is depicted in an area lying adjacent to Sioux Falls Municipal Growth Area. While this area is not likely to see a significant change in land use, however, it is expected that it will occur over some point, that some development will occur over some point during the approximately 25-year timeframe of the SECs. Three, the effects of noise, odor, traffic, air, and water pollution. Another negative factor shall be eliminated or controlled through the use of screening, setbacks, and orientation. There should be no, there should be little or no negative effects, because the site was selected based on significant landowner interest, interconnection suitability, optimal solar resource, and minimal environmental impact. At a minimum, the petitioner should be held accountable for any damage to public or private lands and roads. In addition, there may be, there may be a need for requirement included on the permit for dust control on the portion of 468th Avenue or 268th Street, for that matter, that will be utilized during construction of the facility. The applicant intended, indicated in their request that they are willing to work with the necessary authorities to ensure that the effects of the project are minimal, if any. Screening could be a possible requirement to help ease residents' concern about the visual impact from their homes. As I mentioned, the applicant has been working with neighboring landowners to develop an ideal screening method for the visual impact the proposed project may have on surrounding properties, which has been included for your review. And while it may be difficult to determine the amount of noise generated from the transmission lines themselves or transformers, it should not be at a level that would otherwise constitute a nuisance for surrounding properties. And lastly, the proposed use shall not adversely affect the public. The applicant sent out a courtesy letter to inform nearby residents about the proposed solar farm project and what to expect from this innovative, innovative development in their area. Cherry Creek plans to utilize either fixed tilt solar panel modules facing south or linear axis tracking system that would face east in the morning, perpendicular to the ground during midday, and west in the afternoon. In either case, there is a potential for a visual impairment of the view for residents' homes, but should not adversely affect the health, safety, and welfare of the general public. Just a couple of things that I'd like to go through, as far as the standards for review of commercial solar energy conversion systems, that they are permitted in the A1 agricultural, C commercial, I1, I2, I industrial, or C recreation/conservation by a conditional use permit, and that they're not allowed to have any advertising signs, or, but they are allowed one project identification sign that is not to exceed 25 square feet, and that they must complete an interconnection agreement with an electric utility, and that they have to attain all locally required road permits for construction, and identify all the state, county, township hall roads that will be used, and notify the appropriate governing body if the hall roads identified are acceptable. The governmental body shall be given adequate time to inspect the hall roads prior to use, where practical. All weather roads shall be used to deliver all of their heavy components. The permittee shall, prior to use of the hall roads, make satisfactory arrangements with the appropriate governmental body for maintenance and repair of the hall roads. Permittee shall promptly repair private roads, easements, or lanes damaged from moving equipment or when retaining access to the site unless otherwise negotiated with the affected landowner. That the permittee shall utilize all reasonable measures and practices to control dust, which is included in the zoning ordinance, so take that into consideration as far as the conditions that would need to be added if approved. The permittee shall develop a stormwater pollution prevention plan and soil erosion sediment control plan prior to construction. At a minimum, necessary to address things like erosion control measures, identify degrading construction and drainage of roads, necessary soil information, detailed design features to maintain downstream water quality, and that they have a comprehensive revegetation plan to maintain and ensure adequate erosion control and slope stability, and to restore the site after temporary project activities, and measures to minimize the area of surface disturbance. And the plan shall identify methods for disposal or storage of excavated material. All solar farms must be in compliance with law, local, state, and federal regulatory standards, and the permittee has, should submit, has to submit a decommission plan within 120 days of completion of construction, describing how the, how the process will be involved in decommissioning, and that this should include how, include the manner in which they have to ensure that they have the financial capability to carry out the restoration requirements when they take effect. All commercial solar energy conversion systems shall be deemed inoperable if it has generated, if it has not generated power for 12 consecutive months. Upon expiration of this permit, or upon earlier termination of operation of the SECs, the permittee shall be obligated to dismantle and remove the site. All electrical generating equipment over our head and underground cables, foundations, buildings, and ancillary equipment to a depth of four feet. To the extent possible, the permittee shall restore and reclaim the site to its pre-project topography and topsoil quality. All access roads shall be removed unless written approval is given by the affected landowner requesting that one of these, one or more roads or portions be retained. Any agreement be, between permittee and affected landowner shall be submitted to the county planning department prior to completion of restoration activities, and the site shall be restored within 18 months of, after expiration. And if necessary, the planning director, the planning department may include provisions that ensure that the applicant has the financial resources for decommissioning, which may be in the form of an escrow account that the project developer would deposit funds into over the life of the project. However, the financial provision should, should not be so onerous as to make the, the project unfeasible. And just some of the, or my recommendations, staff finds the proposed project meets the goals and policies of the 1998 Comprehensive Development Plan. So, staff recommends approval of conditional use permit 14-44 with the following conditions. One, that the solar energy conversion system, SECs, be entirely enclosed in a six-foot-high fence gated and locked. Two, that if dust, mud, dirt, or other debris causes a nuisance to adjacent properties or is brought onto 268th Street and 468th Avenue, all driving and parking areas will need to be hard-serviced in conformance with Section 16.04 of the 2002 Revised Joint Zoning Ordinance for City of Sioux Falls and Minnehaha County. Three, that stormwater pollution prevention plan and soil erosion and sediment control plan be submitted to the planning director prior to construction. Four, that a landscaping plan be submitted prior to construction, and all landscaping shall be maintained in a live state, and all noxious weeds be controlled. Five, that the applicant shall follow the proposed construction phases of the SECs as submitted to the planning director. Six, that a building permit is required prior to construction of the SECs and installation of any signage. Seven, that all signage be in conformance with Article 17 and Article 17A of the 2002 Revised Joint Zoning Ordinance for the City of Sioux Falls and Minnehaha County. And with that, I'll entertain any questions that you may have.
Mr. Chairman, now, are we mainly hearing this again because they want a longer period in which to build, or is this just penance for us for the first time? What is it?
We're hearing this again because the landowners within 500 feet were notified in Lincoln County that weren't notified of the last planning commission meeting, so this is a re-notification.
Other questions? Thank you, David. On the interest of time, we definitely want to be able to hear all arguments pro and con. Oh, yeah, I will, we'll get there. And we are, we are going to hear from the petitioner, but I also wanted to state early on here is that we are dealing with land use issues here, and so tonight, I'm, we're interested in hearing all arguments pro and con for this, this conditional use, but we do want to try to avoid repetitious testimony, and we would also like to try and pull maybe the arguments for and against, about 20 minutes of real time for rebuttal. So, first we'll hear from the petitioner, and then we'll hear from others that would be in favor and those opposed. Hopefully, there's a spokesman or a spokesperson for this, so that we don't need everyone to stand up and testify. Again, don't want to hear redundant things.
Just a point of wonder, there are more chairs in this room.
Yes.
I see five or six. If people in the overflow room want to come in, there's, there's a few chairs here and there.
So, at this point, would the petitioner please come forward? And state your name and the address, and tell us a little bit about your project.
Good evening, Commissioners. Jordan Burmeister, on behalf of Cherry Creek Solar LLC, subsidiary of Geronimo Wind Energy LLC, my business as Geronimo Energy, 7650 Ellis Road Way, Suite 725 Dyna, Minnesota, Appreciate the opportunity to speak to you again on this conditional use, again, this evening. David did a very good job of, you know, presenting the details on the project, the history, the timeline of the project. You know, since the last time, you know, we have heard, you know, some of the concerns, right, some of the neighbors, landowners, about visual impacts, and also decommissioning plan as well, to, for the assurance, you know, once a project is, you know, at the end of its useful life, that it is going to be decommissioned in an appropriate manner. So, we want to point out that we've, we've gone ahead and, you know, went through with, with our proposal of a landscaping plan. We've provided that in the, to the staff, and that's in the reports as well, as presented. You know, we feel that that's a very good balance of trying to mitigate any potential concerns any neighbors have. In addition to that, we have set back the site plan from those neighboring houses as far as possible on the, the subject property, you know, to, to help that in addition as well. As far as the decommissioning plan, we've, we've went ahead and provided that language well in advance of what the ordinance requires, which is generally 120 days following construction. So, we've, we've done that, you know, then forthright of presenting that as well, and what type of plan, that's, that's standard for, for solar projects. So, just wanted to make, make those points, you know, clear, and, you know, we have been visiting with, with the neighbors to hear concerns, and make sure that we, we can address Myself or Tina Rataw, and my colleague here, would be happy to answer any additional questions you might have on, on the project for my company.
Any questions? Do we have anything? Mr.?
Jordan, what will the setbacks be on the south and the east?
On the south, let's get the side line here again, reference, from the panels to the center of the road on the south side, 530 feet approximately, and then from the east, it will be, in the actual home site, up to the property line to the east, 464 feet to the south, home site there on the east side, and then from the northern home site on the east side, I don't have an exam, dimension of that, but I would assume that would be about 300 feet or so behind a grove that's just west of that home.
Thank you. Other questions?
Mr. Burmeister, you mentioned in the decommission plan, which, to your point, I want to note, going above and beyond and speaking of that at this phase of the project, talks about the feeder lines that would be connected to the power grid being abandoned. Do you know approximately how deep those are going to be?
Generally, those lines are four to five feet, you know, at least below frost level, so, you know, it's down below that, and that's standard, you know, for any, even wind farms, you know, with any collector feeder lines would be left in place below the frost level, you know, as far as that goes.
Not being an electrical engineer, but if the site became something else later on, can that be reversed, so that, in that, that could become a very plausible underground electric feed into a neighborhood or otherwise? Can it be reversed?
Sure. I guess, our line from the corner of 41st and Ellis Road, that'll be a buried line, about a mile and a half to the site. With it, if it's Excel, I guess if it's tied into Excel, this would be, I guess technically outside of Excel's service territory, so that, I guess that would have to be, you know, a valuable time.
To be determined.
Yeah.
Any more questions, Jordan?
Commissioners? Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on behalf of this application? At this point, we open it up to the floor, again, I'm hoping that maybe we have a couple spokesperson that might want to come forward.
Thank you. My name's Mike Schaper. I'm a lawyer here in Sioux Falls, and I represent 14 of the landowners and neighbors of this facility, three of whom live in Lincoln County directly across the road and 468th Avenue. Cherry Creek Solar LLC was formed on August 26, 2014, as a Delaware LLC, three days before it filed its application with the Planning and Zoning Commission here. According to the information that Geronimo and Cherry Creek submitted, neither of those entities have ever operated or built a facility of this magnitude. In fact, Geronimo has said it has 400-kilowatt solar installations on 10 slumber land stores in the Twin Cities metro area. That's the extent of its, its operative ability that it's shown to date. This is a proposal to essentially cover 99 acres with solar panels on that essentially quarter section of ground. Now, in its application to the commission, Cherry Creek and Geronimo touted the fact that they are in a process with, a project with Excel Energy in Minnesota called the Aurora Project, and that's a project to essentially build 20-some solar farms in the state of Minnesota, required by Minnesota law, because Excel Energy and other power companies are required to have renewable sources of energy. Well, it turns out that the Minnesota PUC forced Excel Energy to sign a tentative agreement with Geronimo for these, the solar energy production, but Excel has, in the, this last month, in October, has filed objections with the Minnesota PUC, and I've submitted documents here, including newspaper articles and filings with the Minnesota PUC, where essentially Excel has taken the position, we don't need the additional energy, our energy demands are not that great, number one, and number two, we found other sources, solar energy that are cheaper, so they're asking to get out from their deal.
Mr. Schaper, can I ask you, how does that relate to this parcel?
It relates to this parcel because, in particular, the ordinance, the joint ordinance here. Oops. Sorry, that's right. The joint ordinance here requires, and that's 15.09 subsection 2 subsection 3, that there has to be an interconnection agreement with an electric utility. There has, that's a requirement of your ordinance before this can be approved. Now, the ordinance doesn't specify when does this interconnection agreement have to come into existence, but in its proposal that was submitted with its schedule, Cherry Creek said they're going to have a signed interchange agreement or power purchase agreement with XL Energy by January of 2015, which is, what, a couple of months away? So we question whether they'll ever be able to comply with that requirement of the ordinance. And we submit to these, both of you, that there should be a condition imposed on Cherry Creek, if this is approved, that they have to have an interchange agreement or power purchase agreement consistent with your own ordinance, either by the time that they've scheduled, listed on their schedule, January of 2015, or certainly before they start construction. Now, I don't know if they're ever going to get an agreement with XL Energy in light of what's happening in Minnesota, but I think it's a serious question that you don't just build this thing, you know, under the field of dreams theory and they will come, because they have to have that agreement by your own ordinance. In effect, it must be completed. And Mr. Heinhold indicated that was one of the standards that had to be met to issue this permit. Now, on the decommissioning end of it, there has to be a decommissioning plan submitted. Now, they've submitted a plan, but the ordinance clearly contemplates that it shall include a description of the manner in which the permit will ensure that it has the financial capability to carry out the decommissioning and restoration. There's been nothing submitted. We have two limited liability companies, and as lawyers, we know why you have limited liability companies, is to limit your liability. We don't know what, we don't know what the cost of decommissioning is going to be. And there have been, and I also submitted to Mr. Anderson documentation from other jurisdictions where there are serious issues raised about the, how do you dispose of these solar panels? You know, can you put them in a landfill? Are they subject to hazardous waste regulations because they contain mercury and cadmium and other hazardous chemicals? So the point being is, we submit that as a condition of issuing this permit, Cherry Creek Solar should submit to the county commission and to the joint bodies here what the cost of decommissioning is going to be. Now, we know in this state that there's been any number of failed enterprises, enterprises that either got started or got kind of built or mostly built. And Northern Beef in Aberdeen is an example of it, where, and there it sits. So what do you do if this thing doesn't, is, and I understand you're not in the business of determining the financial viability of it, but the problem is, you've got 100 acres of solar panels out there, that if something goes wrong, the South Dakota PUC doesn't regulate them because their regulatory limits stop at like 100, has to be 100 megawatts before they have any jurisdiction. So who's going to get stuck with the cost of taking this thing down if it gets half-built, partly-built, completely-built, or for some reason, there's nobody around at the end to take it apart? It's my understanding in some of the submissions to the planning and zoning that there was an issue about Cherry Creek's going to be the less C and some other entity's going to be the landowner. Well, who is? Is Geronimo going to have another entity that's going to, another LLC that's going to own the land and lease it to Cherry Creek? And they proposed an escrow agreement between those two entities. We submit that there should be a bond or a surety, which is required, can be required under your ordinance. And the surety, if you want to put it in place with Minnehaha County as the obligee, just like a performance bond would work, then Minnehaha County can access those funds if it has to, to decommission this project. So we think there should be something, there should be a condition in place to that effect. And maybe it's too onerous to require them to post the full amount of the bond at the beginning, but if they gradually, maybe it could be done in increments, where if they get a fourth of it done or a half of it done, they post a fourth or a half of it at that point, and then when it's completed, post the full amount of the bond so that if something happens, somebody's going to be stuck taking this thing apart. I mean, at the last meeting of this body, there was a question, what if there's a hailstorm and all this stuff's busted up? What are you going to do? You know, who's, you know? So that's an issue. The other thing is, we think there's questions in the staff recommendation that there's a provision in the ordinance that allows the county to hire an expert. If there's technical expertise required, the Planning and Zoning Commission doesn't have, you can hire a technical expert and charge the applicant for the cost of that. Now, there's been a, staff recommendation says there won't be any reflection of any kind of adjacent property. Well, how was that determined? Based on what type of solar panels? Based on what evidence? Then, the other recommendation says that a minimum, the petitioner should be held accountable for any damages to public or private lands and roads. Well, how is that going to be determined? How's it going to be enforced? What screening? Is screening going to actually be required, or is it recommended? It wasn't included the last time this body met and approved this. And then there was another staff recommendation said it would be difficult to determine the amount of noise generated from the transmission lines or transformers. Says who? I mean, I don't know what scientific evidence or study has been done to establish that. The other issue has to do with the roads, the dirt, dust, mud, and that. 468th Avenue, so you know, the borders of south side of this property, is a township road maintained by Delapre Township. As you know, a lot of townships split the road, and Wayne might take the west half of that. But this section of that road is maintained by Delapre Township, which is township in Lincoln County. What authority does this body have to require the hard surfacing of that or the maintenance of it? So those are questions that we have. I think the bottom line is that we, the adjoining landowners, have concern about being the guinea pigs for an entity that's never established or built one of these before. Obviously, everybody knows that, you know, solar energy is probably a good thing, but is this the right place for it? Thank you.
Questions for Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Schaefer, I do understand and appreciate the issues you have with the recent creation of the corporation. But is this the wrong land to use? I mean, is this, is this not in the sunshine?
I think it's the wrong land because it's, as Mr. Heinhold pointed out, it's right budding up against, close to Sioux Falls, and it's midway between the country acres with estates, which I think is, what, 75, 80 homes over there. It's an area that's clearly, I think, going to be developed over time. You know, you've got a landfill that sits west of there. That would be a perfect place to put a solar energy farm, I would think, and it would be compatible with that.
Thank you. Is there someone else that would like to speak to this man?
My name is Dan Heine. I have the property exactly right on the very east edge of this. I did see a copy of a landscaping plan which shows no landscaping on the west half of my property at all. They've, at least the one I saw, anyway. He mentions that, in the last plan that I saw, I can't remember the guy's name from Geronimo, but Burmeister, he had mentioned a 300-foot setback from my property, and the last plan I saw was 90 feet, with the fence line right on the property line. No buffer between the property line and the fence line. Additionally, one of the things they talked about before was six-foot chain-link fence with barbed wire on top of it. My understanding from the zoning ordinances are that no more than a six-foot fence is allowed in that district. It could only be in commercial and industrial where more than a six-foot fence is allowed. Couple other things talk about in the ordinance for if somebody wanted to put up a gravel pit. My understanding in section 1514, there needs to be a 1,000-foot buffer from a gravel pit. Yet here, the fence line's right on my property line, no buffer. Further in the ordinance with the gravel pit talks about implementing earth berms. The berms should be constructed before any extraction of rock and gravel. For wireless communication towers, it says if there's a fence adjacent to residentially or residentially used or zoned property, natural materials shall be used for fence screening. If chain-link fencing is needed for safety and security, additional landscape screening shall be required outside the chain-link fence to screen public view of telecommunications sites. I guess these are some of the things, being so close to the property, that I think some of these things need to be addressed before we grant this conditional use permit. Thank you.
Mr. Burmeister, I understand that you have a grove of trees on the far
Oh, me?
Yes. Or I'm sorry, Mr. Heine.
Yes, I do.
But you have a grove of trees on the far
Yep, and they're hundreds of years old and very thin, and I can see right through them right now.
Okay.
But that
But you do have some screening.
I have some trees, but in my opinion, my property line is my property line, whether there's any trees or not. They should supply screening from their materials, no different than anybody else's property line.
Would you show me which home is your property?
Yeah, it's right on the, where that little jogout is on the east side.
The lower one or the upper?
The upper one, the one that, basically right there. The back of my property would be right on their fence. Any other questions? Thank you.
Related to Mr. Chairman's testimony, any question for staff, if you don't mind? Not in regards to this conditional use, but as ag land, you could, my understanding is you could have buffalo there, which are kind of ornery animals, and some very significant fences. Are there setbacks and restrictions of fences for ag uses as it is?
No.
No restrictions on location, size, or type?
Not for ag fences, no.
Okay, just checking. Thank you. Any other testimony?
Good evening. My name is Vince Jones. I'm an attorney at Woods Fuller here in Sioux Falls. I represent Seven Mountains Capital Management LLC, which owns the quarter immediately to the east of the proposed site. I worked with Mr. Schaefer. Schaefer, in an attempt to avoid repeating myself with him, despite my occupation. And I'm also a God fearing man, so I'll try to keep the pen in order. My points are primarily focused on four issues. First, the proposal's not compatible with the considerations provided in Article 19.47 of the joint regulations. There's going to be a significant diminution in value to surrounding landlord, landowners, including my client. It's better suited elsewhere, and the applicant hasn't provided sufficient information to this joint commission or the public about the impact of the site. Now, regarding the impact of the site, my clients are not just some faceless LLC that its property was purchased many years ago by Alan Bodie with the purpose of eventual development in mind. He's been a good steward of the land. And now, just when development is becoming a reality, it faces frustration from the application that's under consideration today. There's no doubt that a solar installation of this nature is going to affect the property. It's going to affect all the surrounding property. Ultimately, people don't want to live by these things. They're ugly, they're glare, and the buffering is not going to solve it, at least not the buffering that I've heard described so far. If the applicant disagrees, then where's the glare set at? I mean, they say, oh, it doesn't glare. Well, I mean, I've seen these things around. If you do a Google search on solar installations, there's one that was installed in Minnesota by St. John's University. Well, I went to school there. It's about 200 yards from where I lived, and looks like it glares to me. So, I mean, show us some information. Show us some examples. Show us that it's not going to glare. I haven't seen anything like that. Show us some evidence. In the course of my client's investigation of this application, we've prepared a land analysis, and I passed that out. It's included in these materials. We think that shows approximately what the diminution in value would be. As you can see on the second page of the analysis, the approach used was to determine the value of the property as an agricultural use, which is all we think that it's going to be good for once the installation is in place, at least a portion of it. Second, we estimated the price based on development property, which we hope to do and have hoped to do for a long time. It's our investment-backed expectation. So on page three, you can see the comparable sales of agricultural property that we looked at in the area. And the idea was to come up with an average of comparable sales. Page four indicates that the average sale price is between $8,000 and $8,500 per acre for agricultural property. Now, on page five, we pulled several comparable sales of development land, which is all, you know, looks like it's near, it's all near the joint jurisdiction territory. We recognize that the land is not quite ready for development yet because there's no sewer run out to it. There's infrastructure issues. If it was, it would be substantially more valuable. However, we think that it's going to be sewerable within five to 10 years, and that's based on some investigation that we did with the city, and there's some reference to that in the materials as well. So it's not unrealistic to say that it could be sewerable in five to 10 years. This means the property has great potential for development. And I'll get to the development that's happened so far here in a moment. But as you can see on page six, we think the land has a value of $15,000 to $17,000 per acre presently. We think that's conservative because it's going to, the diminution in value will become more apparent as development approaches. Property value goes up, and the usefulness of the buffer area goes down. Now, on page seven, you can see that we indicate we think a portion of my client's property will be undevelopable, undevelopable, because no one will want to develop residential neighborhoods next to an installation like this. Commissioner Barth, you asked about why this place, what's wrong with this place. Well, if you look at the maps and you look at the materials that I provided in the application, I mean, you can see the vast majority of the development that's happened and is happening in that area is residential, this residential area. So we think that 40 to 60 acres is going to be rendered less valuable or undevelopable. We think this is an estimate that's reasonable based on the amount of property line that's shared with the applicant property, the description they provide of the installation and its minimal screening, and current trends and setbacks in buffer zones in the Sioux Falls area. So if you look at the difference between the development value and the agricultural value, our conclusion is that our client's property, and now depends, you know, there's other properties here that are, that share longer property line, but our client's property is going to be negatively affected presently by about a half million dollars. And again, we think that's conservative, and we think that discrepancy is going to be much greater in five to 10 years when that property is sewerable. much greater as, in five to 10 years when that property is sewerable. Again, the concern primarily is the proximity of this installation to what has been up to this point, a largely residential development area. We believe that trend will continue. Why is this here? Mr. Schaefer kind of stole one of my points here, the Sioux Falls municipal landfill is a mere four to five miles to the, to the west of this place. This project is supposedly associated with Excel Energy and it's supposed to develop electricity. Well, there's a brand-new Excel Energy electrical substation, the Law Lake Substation, that's going in practically across the street from the landfill. So, you've got infrastructure, you've got existing use of the land that's much better suited to an installation such as this out there. Why here? We've also included some information related to notice that my client has got from the pipeline people. You know, we've heard a little bit about that, but we don't know where that's going to be, I haven't seen that addressed in the, in the materials to, to much degree. What's going to happen if there's a part, pipeline through this? We really don't know. You know, the, the commission is supposed to examine other negative factors according to the, to the joint regulations. And factors not related to noise, which I don't think they've quantified at all, traffic, air pollution, there's a generic other negative factors in subsection C of Article 19.07. I have to say, my clients are not satisfied with the amount or the type of screening that's been discussed. Corn isn't tall for most of the year. Lots of other crops aren't tall ever. Grass is not as tall as this fence or the solar panels that they're describing, it's tall as a man's body, taller than some like me. Mr. Schaefer elaborated on other negative factors. At the end of the day, this proposed use should not negatively adversely affect the public, and I think the issues we've raised, we've raised today show that we like, we know, or we suspect a lot more negatives about the property and this proposed location of this substation or this, this installation than we do about the positives. There's more questions than answers. Until they can clearly reassure us that the public is not going to be adversely affected by this installation, then the permit shouldn't be granted, and we should look into the type of conditions that need to be imposed in order to make it practical and protect the public. So, for these reasons, my client screwed you not to grant this, this permit.
Any questions for Mr. Jones from the city side?
Yes. You're basing, uh, there's a letter in here saying that they have no idea if there's going to be a loss of land value from the board of utilization. But you're saying you know more than he does and that it is going to be a loss in value?
Sir, we, we did a, we, we had a land analysis performed by people that we consider to be experts. They looked at the land values in the area, and that's the conclusion that we came to.
Okay. So, the next, so if someone else brought it up and said that there's none, I mean, you had another expert say that he can't do it. How, I, that's why I'm getting at is, is the fact that you're saying it because you're, how am I saying this? How do you know that for sure that there's going to be a loss of land value?
Well, because the-
You're speculating, right?
Well, we're speculating based on the evidence that we've seen and investigated. You know, we, we know there's glare, we haven't been reassured that there's not going to be glare here. We've looked at the examples that we've seen on the ground. As Mr. Schaefer pointed out, we've seen that there's evidence of trouble with the installations that are proposed in Minnesota. It appears that their relationship with Excel Energy is deteriorating, so. And we also, you know, they also think this is not the right place for this. You know, we've got some evidence that we think-
Mr. Schaefer, or, excuse me, Mr. Jones, they were, last time when they were here, they got up and told us why it is exactly the right place. So, again, you feel that it's one way, and they're quite confident that the landfill isn't the right place. So, I can appreciate that that's your, the people that you represent, that that's, that's their view on it. But likewise, the petitioner has a view that's counterintuitive to what you're saying as well. And I guess as far as it relates to the land values, you're, you're asking us to handcuff a current landowner for the next 15 to 20 years based on speculation that you're, the people that you represent may five years, may 10 years, may 15 years develop that land, when currently there is no plan to do so. Well, there's a current landowner with the plan, and he's making his petition, and, and really what we're here to really talk about is land use. It is, a solar substation is allowed under agricultural land, and we have seen a wide variety of substations come before the planning commission in the last 10 years. They're within the city limits, and yes, they're not to this size, but relative to the neighborhoods that they're in, the screening is less than the screening that they're getting here. So, I think to say that you speculate that the land values will, will be devalued, you're speculating that there's no glare, well, they do have studies to say that there is no glare. They didn't present them this time because they presented them in the last time, but they do have point, counterpoint to everything that you have said thus far. Would be my point.
I appreciate that, but we think you've got evidence that there will be diminution, and it's, it's my responsibility to put that in there.
That I can appreciate.
Any other questions for Mr. Jones from the, from the-
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'd like to see what the, my answer, Jew, I've got a question, can you represent the city? Maybe you can answer this?
I'll let you know if I can.
You stated that within five years, sewer was going to be out into this vicinity. Have you heard of anything to that effect?
That's the first I've heard of that, and that's based on engineering public works opinion that was written in with what Mr. Jones presented.
Okay, and he got it from them that they would be out there within five years?
Correct, it was, I think it was noted that it was Ryan Johnson.
Okay.
Yes.
Because I didn't have time to read the whole thing word for word, so-
It would have been what he just passed out, but, and again, that's the first that I had seen on information as well.
Okay.
Anything else?
Oh, that's it.
Is there anyone else with some new perspective that they'd like to present?
Yeah, good evening, my name's Randy Shaw, and I would like to speak with you. I promised to take about five minutes. We, I'm speaking on behalf of 30 different landowners, and I've got a short PowerPoint here. Any interest of time, I won't go through all the slides, we didn't have that many to begin with, but first of all, I'd like to say that my address is right across the street to the south. First of all, want to thank all the commissioners that devote so much time to the first-class city that we have here in Sioux Falls and to Manyaha County. I think all of us realize that Manyaha County and Sioux Falls is the envy of South Dakota, if not throughout the Midwest. The landowners that we're talking about, if I could have them stand to be recognized, because I want to assure you, I'm not just speaking on my own behalf, we've had neighborhood meetings, but if I could have the landowners stand to be recognized that, that are part of this discussion. I'd like to talk about a few points. First of all, state that we're definitely in favor of alternative energy sources. We realize that green energy is, is a way that, things that we need to look forward to. We've all seen wind energy farms. We also recognize that solar energy is in its infancy. I'll fast forward through some of these in the interest because I know some of them have already been raised, but I'd like to point out a few things that I know were brought up by, by Mr. Burmeister in terms of meeting with landowners, continuing to meet with landowners on issues. I live right across the road from it, I've had one 10-minute meeting with Jordan Burmeister when we originally got the letter back in August. I called, Cherry Creek, Geronimo, it took two weeks before anybody got back to me. We've had one 10-minute meeting where he met with myself, my neighbor, to talk about screening. We told him our concerns about the visual impact of the solar panels, and I'll give you a visual of what's been proposed so far. But the information that's came back has been, hasn't been a good feel for first impressions. I realize that first impressions can be hard to, you have to overcome those, and you have to keep an open mind, and, and we've certainly tried to do this. And I'll point to three things. One is, we first of all heard that the trees would harm the efficiency of the solar panels because of shading concerns. We can't have trees close to solar panels. Well, it turns out there's 500 to 600 feet, I think all of us realize that there's no tree within 500 feet that's going to cause a shading concern. There's also talk about the fact that, well, let's start 500 to 600 feet from the south border to be a good neighbor. Actually, they're doing that due to drainage issues and not because of their own concern about adjoining property values. And then we heard about the experience with many solar panel projects, and I know there's been issues brought up on that, but again, to reiterate, Cherry Creek and certainly Geronimo's never built a project like this with any first-time ventures. I don't know about you, but the first time I've raised my child in my life, first time I've done things in my business, I haven't always done the best job, and I, and I learn, learn as I go along, and I think that's certainly true for projects like this. Here's a visual of a substation that we took a, took a picture of, it happens to be out in Brandon, but has some very great shading around it that, that provides some good things, and, and I'm not sure, do you have a picture? France, yeah, very good, yeah. But here's what they're proposing essentially is 18-inch cedar trees. I, I think you can recognize that 18-inch cedar trees certainly provide no visual impairment to anything that you're looking at, and, and you'll notice some little sticks there in the, in the middle, that's the Amer maples that they're referring to, that they're proposing to plant. The cost of these, I'm aware, they talk about, you know, surrounding the whole property, there's actually only lilacs on the north and west side, and Mr. Hein, who lives north of me, I talked about the fact that they're not even proposing building anything, planting anything close to there. This is a $25 million project. These trees would probably cost around $20,000. That's 0.1%. Let's recognize the fact that they only proposed these after the appeal was filed. So, up until the time that the appeal was filed, they weren't even willing to come to landowners like me to talk about what screening would be favorable to us or what would be desirable to us. I mean, you're only talking about increasing the cost 0.1%. That's not a, any sizable cost that should cause any, any bit of concern for a $25 million I'll end with the fact that, here's the State of Minnesota picture of that. Again, that's only a 10-acre project, certainly wasn't built by Geronimo or nor Cherry Creek. You can see a glare there, we ta, I talked to a resident that lived right to the south of that, she said every morning, yes, there is a glare. They'll talk to the fact that there's solar panels close to airports, how can there be a glare? I'll tell you, when I'm driving down a road at night and someone has their bright lights shining on me, that's a glare to me, I know it's not a glare to an airplane hovering up above in the sky. So, I would, so I would have a little bit of a, a counter to that point that just because there's panels around airports that there obviously is no glare, that doesn't make any sense to me, but, you know, again, I'm a layman, I'm a layman, and, and maybe I just don't understand the technicalities like they do. We don't really feel there's one positive impact to any neighboring properties in this We would, we would end with, you know, we're in favor of building alternative energy solutions, but let's experiment somewhere outside of South Dakota. Let's don't do a first-time project here in the great county of Manyaha, and certainly within one mile of the city limits of Sioux Falls. And let's, let's go up to reasonable-sized farms. And, and on behalf of the 30 landowners that I'm talking about, that we have an average homeowners, landowners lifespan are around 12 to 15 years there, we've been great tenants in that property, and we love that area, and we would seriously ask you to disapprove of the conditional use permit.
Any questions?
Those are excellent comments. Mr. Shaw, not every project is going to benefit the neighbors, but I guess my question is, what could they do that would make this project better for you and the neighbors? What could they do that would make it more palatable? What could they do to calm some of your concerns?
Yeah, I think there's really three main areas. Scale down the project, let's make sure we, let's make sure we learn how solar panels really work on agricultural land, because again, this is their first time doing anything like this. Why do I want to trust them to build 100 acres? Why do I want them to trust them, when it took so long for them to come to me and propose even 0.1% increase in their project cost? Why should I trust them to have judgment to repair the road? So, one is to scale it down, two is to provide more adequate screening. 18-inch trees do not screen one thing. Size of this microphone's 18 inches is certainly not blocking your view of me, and these panels are 10 to 12 feet high, they're going to be seen for miles around. And three, let's work together. I, I find a lot of value in meeting people face-to-face. When I come here with you folks, I see real people on the planning commission, I see real people on the city and county side. I've had a chance to see Jordan and his, his associate, and I met Jordan one time, and when people work together face-to-face, they can accomplish a lot. But when they're not willing to do that, when they're not willing to come forward, I, you know, I've contacted them several times, you know, talked to Mr. Hein, he knows my name really well, I'm sure, but through emails, and it's good to see them face-to-face and work together like that.
Thank you. Any questions?
One last. How many meetings did Mr. Burmeister refuse with you then?
Refuse or be proactive to initiate.
Well, I, I'm hearing that he's not, he had one 10-minute meeting and that was it.
Yeah.
And he kind of led, he kind of led the witness that you were being refused on that.
We've had probably six neighborhood meetings, we've invited him to at least one of those that, that he hasn't attended. I've been told through Mr. Hein that the planning and zoning board that Geronimo, Cherry Creek, they do not communicate directly to the landowners, and that information needs to be pushed forward through the government. So, at that point, then I was working solely with Mr. Hein.
We typically like the applicant to work with them, even landlords.
Yeah, I, I agree 100%, and again, face-to-face is invaluable.
Any other questions? Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you.
We'll take one more, and we're going to wrap it up.
Hi. My name's Kent Bronzer, I also live adjacent to this property on the south border. I only have one thing, because I've been to all these meetings and, and the people here spoke or represented things really well. The only thing I want to point out, and this may bring some, well, I don't know, opposition, however you want to put it, but I just want to caution the size of the project. I really, and I know we're only here to speak about this 140 acres, but I want to point out that it was stated in, in an Argus Leader article interview, where Scott Anderson did an interview, he stated that this project would be 300 acres, excuse me, 300 acres. So, I would like to caution, where will this go from here? Because that statement was made for a reason. We don't know why, we don't know what the workings behind it is, but it was made, it's in the article. You can go to the Argus and, and search it, and you'll find it on July 23rd. I, I would just submit that possibly, there's a fact that the same property owner who owns this property also owns the adjacent property, 160 acres, to the west. Client's properties owns that one as well. 140 plus 160, let's see, that equals 300. So, I know we're not here to talk about that piece of property, but the concern is, if one piece of property goes in that way, it becomes a much more shoe-in for other adjacent properties to follow suit in the same manner. Now, you're looking at a massive, I mean, 140 acres is massive, you potentially could be looking at a massive 300-acre parcel of land out there with nothing but glaring solar panels on it. Thank you.
Last call for new and unique, different opposition.
I would just add one other comment, and it's kind of been touched on as far as the surety bond and as far as technical support. This is the first one of these we're ever done. We're no experts, I'm assuming you guys are not experts. I'm assuming you guys are not experts. I would more caution. Let's take a step back, maybe get some other experts. Talk about tests about solar. They said they don't glare, but I didn't see no tests from the first, when we had this first meeting a couple of months ago. They said they didn't glare, just like this guy said they do glare. I haven't seen no technical tests. Why don't we have that? More soil tests, more, maybe we need some more experts to test on the land value. Like I said, we're not experts. I think caution is a paramount. You know, have a bond, make sure that they can take care of the problem.
With the applicant, we've heard a lot of opposition. I give the applicant one chance to rebut or make any additional comments.
Good evening. I am Tina Wrightel with Geronimo Energy. There's quite a bit to respond to. I will start with the decommissioning. We agree, as ordinance requires financial surety, we're happy to provide that once it's been constructed as required by the ordinance. We have left that type of requirement open, as different financiers have different ways of providing that kind of financial surety. So different ones will have a letter of credit, other ones will prefer escrow accounts, whatever it might be. But providing financial surety is something that we do, that we will do, that is required by the ordinance. So that has not been overlooked by Geronimo or Cherry Peak Solar. Let's see. A little bit, I'll let Jordan talk a little bit about the screening plans, particularly because he's been working primarily with the landowners on that and neighbors on that. There was one edit that we needed to bring up, is that the 300 feet from Mr. Hein's property is 300 feet from his house. So that's a clarification. For his property, it's probably more around 100 feet. That's where the panels would start. The fence line would, actually, we now have a landscape plan that includes a visual buffer there, so those would be on the property line, and then the fence would be behind that. So that's a clarification there, because we did hear from the county that that was a concern, because initially we had, there are trees there. So we had assumed that that would be sufficient, and we heard that that was a concern, so we added that in. We submitted that to staff, so I don't know if it's in your packet or not, but that landscape plan has been added. We heard the community log and clear that there needed to be a visual buffer, so that's what we did. And then there's various different types of plantings that were in there. I'm assuming you have it in front of you. You can take a look. In terms of noise, I heard that there was a lot of concern about noise, especially from the power lines. Now, the power lines are the exact same lines that you, that they currently use running to your house, running in front, on your streets, running there and on your streets. Same line, a little more complicated when you ask about, can it be used for something else? It can be used for something else, but it depends on who owns the line and kind of where that territory lies. But it is not something that, it is something that can be used in a different manner. It's the same exact technology, same line, same cables as you would use to run a line to a development, for example. And I'm not quite sure with the noise. If you stand under a regular 34, 5 kV line, it's going to sound the same, which is, as far as I'm concerned, virtually noiseless. So you can take a look at that. In terms of glares, glare, we have, the panels are built in a way to observe as much light as possible. Now, virtually no glare is not correct. Everything has some sort of glare. So I just want that to be clear. I don't want you to think that we're saying there is absolutely nothing, no sun, nothing will ever be reflected off of these. They are built to observe as much light as possible. There are metal frames, just like your car is metal, probably hide it. It's actually, if you look at the reflectivity of solar panels, it is less than corn. So you can kind of, it's a very, a different spectrum of how you want to look at that. And I can send you those studies, I can send you the information, but just as an assurance, there are over a quarter million solar systems in the United States. This is not a new technology. It's not that solar doesn't work. It's not that this is an experiment. We don't take these types of developments lightly. They are expensive. They are power plants that do require, that do require a lot of due diligence in ensuring that everything is in line, and it's not something that we experiment with. There was a conversation about interconnection application or interconnection agreement earlier on. We will not have, we will not have a project without an interconnection agreement. So if you want to put that on as a condition, that's fine. We are not going to build without one. So it's kind of, you don't really have to put it on there from our perspective. We don't, we can't build without one, so, but if you want to put that on there, that's...
I believe it's part of the ordinance anyway.
Yeah, and it is, it is. It's required part of the construction. But I wanted just to be clear, so you understand that we're not building without having someone who can buy the energy. Let's see. And I will, I just wanted to touch on the official information going through the, going through the county before goes to the landowners. I wanted to clarify that any kind of questions that we receive in regards to the ordinance, specifically to the ordinance, we requested that that goes through the county, particularly just because of the legal situation that has arisen since the first, since the first public hearing back here, what, two months ago, or month ago. So with that, any specific questions that we received, associated to anything with the ordinance, we filtered that through the county. And then I will let Jordan come up and talk a little bit about some of the landscaping plans and some of these interactions with the landowners. But actually, one more point before I get into that. We did look at the comprehensive plan, and the property further east is within the 16 to 25 years to development. So we are further west from that, further out from that. So that is another just good example why we have located it where we've located it. It's outside of the long-term expansion plan. And I will not really touch on the points with our relationship with Excel. It is a very complicated issue that has been going on for two years, and I don't think the summary you received today is accurate under any notion, but I will not get into that. But I did want to make that statement, because it's not as simple as what was presented today. And then, Jordan, if you want to share that information, and then we can take questions.
Thank you. Commissioner, again, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, as far as communicating with the neighboring landowners, you know, as Mr. Shaw had mentioned, you know, it's been limited. You know, going way back to the very beginning, we did send out the original letter back in August, got minimal response. I do remember Mr. Shaw did call, you know, there was some lag there getting back to him as well. But I was not to ignore his concerns or anything like that. But after, you know, the last hearing, there obviously was some concern about screening and landscaping. So we did come together. You know, I met with three of the neighboring landowners, Kent Bronzrether, Minister Shaw, and then also Wayne Larson as well. Wayne Larson then provided us with an example of some type of screening plants from his business as a tree farm, so that we presented that in more of a formalized document. You know, and with them being smaller, you know, they are going to grow approximately a foot a year, so it's going to take a little bit of time. But as far as that goes, there are three rows that are going to be growing foliage after a few years here. And for us to plant 100 and some six-foot trees, I mean, is very substantial for a project, you know, and so just wanted to clarify that as well. But I just wanted to make sure that it was clear that I have communicated with the landowners via phone calls or person meeting on that. As far as the specifics of the plan, you know, the southeastern and southern plan does have three rows, eastern red cedars, amber maples, and the common lilac. And then the remaining perimeter of the, the rest of the project perimeter, where there's no home sites directly adjacent around it, it's one row of lilacs around the perimeter. So it provided some additional landscaping for those closer home sites around the eastern and southern.
Mr. Chairman, regarding that, like, on our ag projects, we tend to put in one row of oswellows in there because they grow four feet a year, and they're very drought, as 2012 proved, they're very drought tolerant. So like, in four years, you have a 16-foot tall tree or more. And why aren't you considering like, one row of those in conjunction with your other trees? And that's what's common in the, we've done it quite often in the ag, when there's screening would go into that type of thing.
Yeah, I mean, we'll have to, you know, work with the final height of it, of course, to make sure that it's not shading our panels, but this is, you know, a proposal. It doesn't have to be exactly these species of trees. This is what Mr. Larson provided, so that gives us an example to work with through him as well.
Mr. Burmester, I'm hearing that you'd be available to working to increase the screening of faster-growing trees and those types of things.
As far as, you know, within reason, you know, there, you know, we want to make sure that, as far as, you know, cost of the project, if there are some faster-growing species, you know, that won't get too tall for the operation of the project, you know, that may be a possibility. But I just wanted to mention that.
Anything else? Mr. Chair? Yes. Hold on, if this is odd or not. Okay. How do you respond to the concerns that Geronimo is a newbie in this regard, and that you're not really experienced in putting up a project of this size?
I think this question goes back to the fact that we are, well, we've done wind, obviously. Done that very successfully, significantly more complicated than solar. On our team, the Slaton project was designed by our director of solar, so he did all the engineering on that. He owns and operates the St. John Solar Farm, so that is his project that he owns. He developed and built, he added on just this, just recently. So if you drive by, you'll see there are more solar panels there. Fixed dilt instead of tracking this time. He also did the convention center rooftop, and those are basically the three, there's a couple, I think IKEA's got one. Those are the three solar farms in Minnesota, and he's done those. And prior to that, you know, even while he was doing this Minnesota ones, he also built hundreds and designed hundreds of solar farms in California, Arizona. And we are not, we're not, we're not, our solar farms are not something we take lightly. They're obviously cost a lot of money as well. So we don't, when we go to a financer, they are looking for every single possible detail, every single risk. If you don't have that in mind, then you don't get a financer, and you don't get a project. So we make sure that we do that. And things are complicated, yeah, in a regulatory, in a regulatory process, very complicated. And so that's kind of, that's kind of my response, but I do like to focus a little bit on how a lot of these questions surround the technology, how it's an experiment. And this 10-megawatt solar site is a tiny project in the scope of solar world. I'm not saying that that is, that diminishes anything anybody else has said about it, but in the terms of the solar industry, this is not a significantly large project.
Thank you. Anyone else? At this point, I'm going to close the floor for testimony and turn to, I guess we should probably have a motion so that we can have some discussion.
Motion. Second. For discussion.
Motion is second, discussion going to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
At the same time.
Are we not going to discuss the...
No, that was, I thought, just to get the discussion. Motion for discussion, as I took it at approval. So, please. Now, while we're discussing, this is my first time around the track on this, when I was absent two months ago. And I guess I'd just say that I like solar a whole lot better than I like land. I don't think these things are necessary. With the land use issue here, I did, I was prepared to point out that as an ag use, you could have some pretty intrusive uses for the neighbors here that wouldn't even be a part of this commission. So condition use gives us a lot of opportunity to use some things. You might want to tar and feather me, fellow commissioners, but I'm kind of of the opinion that I'd like to hear more about the landscaping plan, because I do think that the residential development is what will proceed this direction. And I didn't hear enough enthusiasm about fixing this landscaping plan from the applicant candidly. And while we normally delegate this responsibility of reviewing the landscaping plan to our planning director, I don't suggest that we usurp that authority and ask for a detailed plan presentation in a subsequent meeting when we can hear maybe a little bit more about glare at the same time. That's what I thought.
I would agree. I think that, I think the landscaping plan is probably inadequate, and I think the trees are small.
Yeah, you need to be on all sides, and in all, equally.
I would just like to see better detail. I mean, I know this is quite detailed, but I think it doesn't reflect the concerns of landowners. It's my take.
Any discussion here on the south side? Sean, you had some conversation last time, as it related to landscaping, and we ended up passing it without a landscaping requirement last time. So has that changed any of your questions or concerns with what you have seen tonight?
I think this appears to be moving in the right direction, with trying to increase the landscape units and trying to do more screening. You know, looking at 18-inch bushes, shrubs, that'll eventually be trees, I think, is not an immediate screening, obviously, but it is moving in the right direction. Some more mature trees along those lines of screening and vision to the neighbors would be favorable.
And that could certainly address the, call it the eyesore nature of this plan. But you can take it from me and my missus as my witness, electrical infrastructure has very little demeaning value to real estate property values if what I personally witnessed recently on the west side of Sioux Falls has anything to say about it. 19th and Zertoma is a very, very, in my opinion, ugly substation, and property values in all cardinal directions from that place are just moving. They are.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I certainly don't think this is going to look as bad as a substation. I have seen solar collectors. I've not seen one this size. But I think that clearly the neighbors, I think they do need a little bit more assurance on the screening and stuff. I think the criticisms of the business plan have nothing to do with it. I mean, if they are crazy enough to build a facility that's going to do, put them broke, that's not our problem. Our problem is to approve of them trying to. We need to make provision for people to do business in this county.
And as long as there's assurances that it can be decommissioned, which are a requirement in the ordinance as well.
So I would agree that we need to have more communication with the neighbors. And I tell you, I was involved in this, we almost had a TIF, or a project for an ethanol plant up north of Sherman. We took a bus to Granite Falls to look at an ethanol plant up there to see what it was like. All the neighbors were on the bus, and, you know, it's important to communicate fully, and it's not always possible, but as best we can. And I think it's not the wrong use for this land. It needs to be, we need to alleviate the concerns of the neighbors, though.
Same thinking, Eddie. It's not the wrong use, it just needs to be minimized in terms of...
And I would challenge the developers of the nearby acreage, would they want to preserve this land in a pristine condition to allow the pipeline to go through? Is that their argument there?
Also, if we were to lean towards a final motion to maybe defer this thing, or ask for it to come back, you know, the applicant has indicated that they've got all kinds of data on glare. I'd like to see that and have it made some comparisons, you know, she said, does it glare as much as corn? And that, okay. My experience is... she said it doesn't glare as much as corn. And then, okay. My experience is, you know, there's things like loss meters and those types of things. Let's understand some of that data, and what kind of glare it really has.
Well, if I may.
Yes.
You know, obviously, the next step would be for it to go to a joint session of the council and the commission. And I think, you know, maybe we just encumber the applicants with the duty of bringing a better proposal for that thing. And I would ask, I guess, Scott Anderson, what he thinks, if that might be possible, or if-
Well, I don't like the idea of, I, I don't like the idea of telling the applicant to, to work something out before the, before it gets to the county, joint county commission. I mean, if we're going to continue, and I think we need to, I think this is a better forum.
Why we have to be these size bucks that we do?
Well, yeah.
Just to deal with these, right?
But I think this is, this is going to be a better forum for interaction between the public and the applicants and you, than at an elected board.
My only additional thing to add with that is that, as it relates to land use, is this a good piece of property for a solar farm? The glare, I don't know if that's within our purview, really. Certainly, I think the landscaping is part of our purview. And we can continue to ask for some continued landscaping addition. But I really think the glare is outside of maybe what we're supposed to look at. And, and like I said before, in meaning no disrespect, I know that their, their view's going to change, and, and that's very bothersome. And I, I can completely understand that. But the reality is, our consumption of energy, most of you have been there over 12 years, and you may have had two or three televisions, but now you may have five televisions, and three phones, and how many other electronic devices. And yes, we're getting to have some energy efficiency as it relates to that. But our overall consumption is, continues to, to rise on a regular basis. And I think that, like I said before, in my time on the commission, I have seen a, you know, a significant number of substations come before us. And I can tell you that they're never welcome into a neighborhood, but they're always needed in a neighborhood. And it will, it will change your view. But I would have to agree with Kurt. I don't believe that in my time, I've ever seen anything like this devalue a property. And we can only take the expertise of Department of Equalization, who has been in that position for a very long time, and recently presented to the Sioux Falls Planning Commission about projects such as these, and, and what the reality is about devaluation of property, and what the speculation is as it relates to devaluation of a property. So, while I'm very understanding that your view will change, I do personally feel that this is probably a pretty good boost for a low impactful energy substation, long term.
And I'm agreeing with what you're asking on this also, that the business is a good use for this land. Again, I'm agreeing with it. Now, I'm going to say, how do we get the, how we get, change number four, just a little bit? How do we change number four, which is that a landscape plan be submitted prior to construction? I think if we change just that one a little bit, would you guys be acceptable to that? Because that's what you're talking about, basically, is-
Right, right. It's been a long time, years ago, I was on the city planning commission, and you do final development plans, at least we did back in those days. You'd, you'd get in there with a pencil and start marking up, this bush isn't big enough. I'm almost at that level. And with, with respect, I think glare is like picking dirt tone colors. I think there is some justification for taking a look at the level of glare in landscape plan in a little more detail. And I'm not, no disrespect to Scott at all, but I just didn't know if I want to put the burden on, on him to, to go through this at, at a level. If we, if we passed a motion that I would vote for, just by strengthening number four, would have to be with landscaping on all sides, they grows to a significant height. And, and I can't tell you what that is until I've had discussions about, you know, we know these trees that are growing four feet a year, that, that Mike mentioned.
Then how does it affect the solar?
Candidly, when you get, you know, several hundred foot setbacks, in whether there are setbacks, or whether they're necessitated by drainage, when you have the room there. Or, if it's a requirement for decent development, it just shrinks the size of the project. It may affect the financial viability, which may require it to look elsewhere. That's my opinion of that.
Wayne, as I look at that, you can talk about screening. And they're talking about the 500-foot setback on the south side of the property, that's where the houses are. And was it 75-foot setback in County Row and Bonnie, his clerk? So, you go back 70 foot, five feet from the road, you put in a four-row shelter belt, one row of which is oswillows, and you've got a screen, and it doesn't touch their solar panels on the south side.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it's not that difficult.
Well, and it looks currently, if you look at this plan, it looks like the screening is up to the, up to the panels themselves, and it would mean that they would have to move it out.
And it would have to, because then, once you pass the rules, it means that the screens are very well.
The screen doesn't have to be ready of the panels, it just needs to sort of view the panels.
Yeah, yeah.
So, what's our motion, to defer till next month?
It's, it's your pleasure, folks. How would you like to dispose of it?
I agree with Steve, and I would help you adjust number four.
That's it.
I think on the city side, we'd like to maybe change how number four reads and not go for a deferral, but-
I, I'm not relishing you doing this.
Well, and also, it would end up being two months, because we don't meet in December.
Right.
You know, so I, I'm in favor of doing something with four and moving forward.
Well, just if I throw this out, the applicant had proposed three, didn't, wasn't it a row of amber or maples, two rows of, of cedars?
Lions.
Or was there a row?
I didn't-
Why don't you just add, why don't you just require a fourth row of, of taller trees that grow to a height, a mature height of 40 to 60 feet?
I'm not a nursery person, but amber maples grow slow.
Yeah, they do.
You need one row of something that grows fast.
That's where I'm looking at, is, you know, where there's oswillows. Beyond, and we're requiring more stuff for them.
And maybe we've had a conversation with Scott, get, you know, Scott gets it, right? Do we want screening on all sides, folks? If you're just fixing up item number four.
Is it needed on the west?
From the west and the north are the middle of the section. I mean, maybe eventually there'll be houses there, but-
I think there will be.
But they'll know that.
And that's one of the reasons I hesitate on a plan.
Is this-
You're 10, 15 years late.
Impact on them to me.
Yeah, they'll know they're there.
Let me also say that if you're farming that piece north, and you're in the shade, you don't like oil.
I mean, that's simple.
Your corn doesn't, that's-
Asking a question.
Is there adequate screening by that second house?
He said they added trees.
Then since this plan was given to us.
I think on the eastern and south is, hold on, we need to-
So, is somebody prepared to bring forward that?
Wayne is usually our wordsmith.
I would say Sean is our wordsmith. We'll let them have that number four.
So, is there calls for one row of rapid growth trees somewhere?
Sean has some, I think some good verbiage as, as to number four.
My move approval of conditional use permit 14-44 on the series of seven initial recommendations listed here by county staff. We have the amendment of number four, adding an additional row of fast-growing trees that are at a minimum height of six feet within two years, to recognize the need for a more immediate screening effect. And I think that will cover it.
If I may, right now, it says must be submitted, let's say it must be submitted and approved. I think that's probably just an oversight.
Fair enough. I would accept that modification. That's my motion.
I second.
We have a motion second to approve, with stipulations, any further discussion?
Any further discussion on the city side?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The same side, yes.
All those opposed? Motion passes on the city side.
Jesse, who seconded for the city?
What's that?
Who seconded for the city?
To go home. Larry and then you.
Oh.
Thank you.